All right. Thank you. Welcome down to Groveland. Tonight is the planning board meeting on Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, 7:00 PM. We'd like to just hand a motion open.
So motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. All right, onto the agenda. See, we have the Zoom meeting. Anyone on? No? iPhone. Is one person on iPhone?
That one person's on.
Maybe it's Sam.
Yeah, Sam.
Yes. No? Okay. All right. Zoning bylaw updates. So first discussion is Economic Development Committee would like to discuss the medical marijuana bylaws. So I can speak to this one here as our representative for the Economic Development Committee. Our first meeting last year, they were looking for ideas of how to bring revenue into the town. They threw it out there. What are, what were our bylaws around the cannabis that we currently have? We currently have zoning bylaws for medical marijuana use only, for town bylaws. So the next step would be if what the town was interested in bringing in the retail aspect of it for, what is it called? It's called recreational use. Thank you. For recreational use, knowing that, from my understanding is that the recreational tax revenue is one of the highest around for, for the state. So it would definitely bring in some additional revenue. So it was just an idea thrown out there. The EDC committee has now been looking into it. So it's coming before us to just kind of get our feel on whether it's something we would think about, whether we would be on board with of putting it in front of the town and saying, hey, maybe we want to look into having recreational marijuana bylaws. Whether we want to do it or not, it's probably something good for us to have in our bylaws regardless, because if it becomes some type of state statute, then we would need to be ahead, stay ahead of that. So that is what this is for. Angus is not able to be here to talk in more detail. But we have some contacts that, and some items that we were looking at for this to present a little bit further. But any guys, just get thoughts on retail, bringing in retail marijuana as a zoning only. We don't have any, just to preface this all, we do not have any interest. No one's come to us and said, hey, we would love to put a retail store in. We have no one that has said that. This is us being diligent and saying, hey, maybe this would be good for our town to bring in a recreational store.
And just for clarification, we did have one company inquire whether or not we did allow for retail marijuana. They currently, or retail cannabis, they currently have a medical cannabis operation in a nearby town, but we're looking to expand their operations to retail, and we're looking for a spot in Groveland. So that also triggered some of the conversation as well. We told them that we do not allow for such. It is being explored. However, the way, the turnaround time would not be within the next two years, at least. But just to make sure on the record.
Recently, someone came up?
Within the last few months, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So if I may, Mr. Jared, the, on the marijuana bylaws, this was first coming into play, and I'm going to guess probably about 15 years ago, when we, when this started surfacing. And so a couple of things came to mind while we were trying to figure this out and throw, and throw it into the bylaws. You know, did the town want it or not want? And I believe it, it went out and came back as a negative at first, but then it's kind of spread around. The second thing was, was the location. Okay. And that was one of the biggest hurdles that I'm going to say our town council was struggling with as to the restrictions. You can't have it so many feet from a school, and you can't have this, and you can't have that going in. And the only place that we really could pinpoint at the time where such a place could come up was at Federal Way, because it was far enough away from the schools and everything, and it wasn't a true industrial park and whatever. And then there was also the side joke that did the medical or the recreational marijuana, kind of like a similar drive-through. And as you drove through on one side, you got your medical or recreational marijuana, and came around the other side, where one of our members said he was going to put a Dorito factory and give out nachos. So that's where that went with it. I think it's good to put laws on the books. Otherwise, if you don't plan where you want to go, you're going to end up somewhere you don't want to be. These particular laws, does anybody know where they came from?
I'm sorry?
This proposal on the bylaw?
No, that is what we currently have in place for medical marijuana, as required by law.
Okay. So this is the one that we did that took so long to?
That's correct, to meet the requirements of Massachusetts law to have medical marijuana regulations in place.
And who's going to pitch out the recreational side of that?
So one of the Economic Development Committee members mentioned that they would be willing to redline the bylaw to allow for the recreational aspect to be included.
What about, what about town council's input on that?
Again, this is very preliminary conversation as to whether or not something would be, you know, amenable for the planning board, or that they think that that would be something that would be worthwhile exploring. So we haven't ran or had conversations with town council, but as soon as something is proposed, that language would be run by town council for approval.
Okay. So tonight's discussion is to see if we want to do anything with this?
It's very early prelim. Just to get the idea out there and just?
I think we need some?
Get the ball roll, like thinking about it. We can, now that we have the bylaws, we can read through what we currently have, and then when they present, we can see what the future would hold.
I think we need a, some kind of, do we have a way to get a tally or some kind of a general consensus from the public, whether it be on our town website or something? Can you throw a questionnaire in?
To survey the residents, you mean?
Yeah.
It's something that we could do if that's what the board wanted to do.
Because that's pretty, pretty inexpensive and easy to find out. I'm not sure, you know, if it's going to get out, and we're only going to get high schoolers to answer it, but maybe. But, but I think that's worthwhile.
Put an age restriction on that?
Is to at least get some, yeah, some kind of feedback. Is to see, is this something we want to pursue, or do we do the baseline, kick it out to town council and just have them write something so it protects the town?
Yeah. So as a reminder, we don't really have anything that we, we have to do.
Yeah.
EDC can, they can push.
So they're going, they're going with it?
They're the ones that are putting it forward.
Okay.
So let them, I'll bring it back to them. Say, let's, let's get a field, take some deals out.
Yeah.
They wanted to get our, just kind of our take on it, what we thought. Me personally, I think it's better to be in front of the bylaws, and behind it. It's out there, it's throughout the state.
Yeah, I'm sure sooner or later, somebody's going to knock on the door, like you said. But the question is also, is where does this revenue go? Does this go into general funds? Is this earmarked into something else? Does it go into some kind of health program for the seniors? Where, where does this money go?
Yeah. I think you do a, do a comparison to other towns.
Yeah.
By who, what, how they use it, things like that, and kind of go from there.
Yeah.
Get our bearings around it.
Yeah, I think it's important, you know, to have a go to the, the good of the people, not a general fund for a new dump truck from, for something like that. No offense to dump trucks, but I think we got another budget.
And you could do percentages, right? It could be certain percent to one, certain percent to other. I mean, there's all.
Yeah. So, but that's?
The people have that.
Well, I mean, just in general, I mean, the town needs tax revenue. So I mean, after any tax revenue is good tax revenue, as far as, as far as budget purposes go, right? So.
Could I ask a couple of questions? Do we know what, what, who does medical versus who does recreational around us? Like?
For companies?
Yeah. No, I mean, like, what the other towns do. Yeah. Are there others, are there other locuses? Because ultimately, if everything comes to fruition, we're going to be looking at who is competing with whom. And so right now, I would imagine a company that wants to do more, wants to do recreational, you know, and can't do it in one place, you know, who knows? You know, what's the saturation of the market like?
Yeah. Well, again, I mean, I think saturation too might be just the, honestly, the issue of the, whatever applicant wants to open a business for that in town, right? I think what we need to do is recognize if we want to enable that application to be put forward for, for a potential business, right? Because right now, they can't.
Right.
Except for medical purposes, obviously. I mean, for one, I, I think that's, it's a good conversation to have. I think it's, it's, it's a good avenue to be explored. I think the benefits of the tax revenue outweigh the, you know, potential, you know, negative effects now that, you know, that industry has been flushed out to an extent, right? This is, this is by no extent, extent a new development in the state.
Yep.
Commonwealth rather. So again, I think at least having the conversation is, is healthy. Like, I don't, I don't think that putting it out to the town is a bad idea. You know, it might be a good idea to get, to get that pulse as well. But I think, but I think that also just adds to the overall conversation I think we should have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree that, I agree that it makes sense for the Economic Development Committee or to put forth, you know, proposals and see, you know, move to the next phase of that.
Yeah.
Certainly, I would echo everyone's comments about, you know, tax revenue and whatnot. And, you know, other towns are doing it as well and getting the benefit. There's no reason why we shouldn't have the least opportunity to entertain someone who wants to do it.
Yep.
And getting the point, your point of getting in front of it and having bylaws so that that isn't an obstacle if and when. That all makes all the sense in the world. So I would be very amenable to moving forward in that way.
Awesome. Yeah.
I'd be okay just to put the protection in place, just to have something in the books.
Sure.
Otherwise, like you said, it could end up something different. So.
State ruling instead of.
But I think that.
I mean, the town council ruling to get us this was, was a lot. I mean, this took a long time to get these, from the time that we first heard about it.
And that was, like you said, 15 years ago. It has since moved much further along. There are a lot more guidelines.
Yeah. Yeah. But I'm going to say this took, this took a decade, because we froze it, because, you know, trying to find out where to put it and all the other stuff. And nobody was sure what was happening with it. Then, of course, it went through. So now, I'm sure things are going to speed up.
Yeah, it was very new. Now it's kind of out there. So.
But I think that if we, if the EDC goes to the community to get their feedback, you need to have some type of language in place to say, because that's, you're going to get questions. You're going to say, well, what about, what about? So you need to have enough. Well, during the hearings, that's, they're going to have to answer all those. Yeah. So.
I will bring it back to them and.
Glad we had the conversation. So thank you.
Anyone on? Jason, you have anything?
No.
All right. Moving on. Accessory dwelling units from the building inspector. Sam is here to talk to us. Hi, Sam.
Hi.
Hey, Sam.
Good evening. Sam Jocelyn, Building Commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, for those that don't know me. For those that aren't aware, in October of '23, Governor Healey put forth the Affordable Homes Act. If you watched the news this afternoon, it got passed by the House, Senate, and signed by Healey into law. Most of it is funding initiatives. What I'm concerned with and want to get ahead of in Groveland is the changes to accessory dwelling units. So they've changed 40A, which is the state zoning regulations. It's not often they do this. This is one of the things that they've changed. One was the definition of accessory dwelling unit, which the last definition had in, there was, you could have owner occupancy requirements. They have struck that. That is something that we have in our bylaw that we are most likely not going to be able to enforce anymore. The bigger part of that, or I guess one of the other parts of this that concerns me is, I'll just give you a quick blurb. No zoning ordinance by law shall prohibit, unreasonably restrict, or require a special permit or other discretionary zoning approval for the use of land or structures for an accessory dwelling unit in a single-family residential zoning district, on and on. Basically, it is an as-of-right. So if you have a single-family house and want an accessory dwelling unit, we cannot send you for a special permit. If it meets the guidelines here, obviously, we can have, if we want to have them larger, we can have a permit process in place. But if it meets the requirements of the state's Affordable Homes Act under 40A, we can reasonably regulate it, is what they give us, which is, they're clear on a couple of things, that there's no more than one additional parking space for an accessory unit. So some cities and towns have multiple, you know, one, two per dwelling unit. I think ours might have that, but not for the accessory dwelling. So I think we're okay there. No additional parking spaces if you're within half a mile of a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station. We're pretty safe on that. But I have definite concerns that if we don't take some precautionary measures with regulating what we are allowed to regulate, we may get things we don't want. So one, I just wanted to get a feel from the board of anything that would be now deemed illegal in our bylaw. I mean, doesn't really matter if we strike it or not, but I'd like to strike the pieces that are no longer, would no longer be legal under this act. But also, two, explore what the state considers a reasonable regulation. They allow us to look at things such as setbacks, which I don't think we need to change our setbacks. We have a general bylaw that regulates all structures to meet our setbacks. I think that should continue on. But we may be able to look at things such as volume of the structure. And the reason I bring that up is when I did a bylaw in Newbury for detached accessory structures, we had manufactured home placed on a lot as the accessory unit that was in a floodplain. So it sat about probably 10, 15 feet higher, plus it had a lot of unoccupied habitable space because it was the roof pitch. So you end up with this massive accessory structure. So that's something I'd like to look into as well. And then the other part where they're no longer owner occupied, I want to look into the legalities of limiting the condoization, if that's a word, of these units. Because now, with it not being owner occupied, if I'm a developer, I buy a nice single-family lot, throw on an ADU as-of-right, cut it, say it's a condo, and can sell them. I, you know, I want to explore further. And along me at this time, I mean, it's 131 pages. I've just started going through it. And, you know, I'm, I'm only marginally prepared tonight. I wanted to bring it up as something that was potentially coming. I didn't expect that you'd actually sign it today. So good timing. But I did want to get a feel from the board of, well, one, if you have any thoughts, you know, shoot them to me, Rebecca, Annie, so that we can start putting something together. And then, two, do you want to regulate it, or just let the chips fall and see how it goes? I tend to think that's probably not the case. I mean, usually, much like I think DJ was saying, let, better be a little bit ahead of it than, you know, playing catch-up. But I did want to get that sense from the board. I did also print just for, you know, your reading after the meeting, an affordable Which just outlines where a lot of the money is going, but the big thing is the ADUs as-of-right under the policy initiatives, and the inclusionary zoning by simple majority, which allows us to do zoning changes for housing with a simple majority rather than a two-thirds. So it does make some of this a little easier to pass, but also makes it easier to do without any type of special permit process. So. Do you have anything, Rebecca, on it, or?
On the accessory apartments, just when we first did that, it was, it was increased from 600 square feet to 900 square feet. And there was a, there was a reason why we did that. It was, it had to do with, if you're a handicapped person, you need a little bit more square feet. And it was set up, although I don't think it's that way at the moment, but it was set up as a by right. Was that, and it was, we call them in-law apartments, and it was for a sick elderly, or just wanted, you know, your parents living with you. And the process that the residents had to go through back then was just lengthy. And some of them didn't have enough time that if they wanted to bring a sick and elderly parent in, or, or family member, that the person passed before they actually got the approvals. So we sped that process up quite a bit, so that it almost became a by right. I mean, you had to do a couple of things. One, you applied, yes. And if you applied for the, for the permit, it was fast-tracked within 30 days. And also, but this is the kicker, is that it had to be registered in with the town, because a lot of these things were popping up, and the town had no idea they were sitting there. And then we got into two water mains and two electric meters and all those things. So that helped out going towards, at the time, I believe, our 10% as well. So I saw quickly in this Senate law that it did mention 900 square feet, but was there a larger number than that, or is that it?
900 would be the as-of-right. We can allow for more if we want. Like, our bylaw currently allows you to go up with a special permit. So if you had an existing garage that was 1,000 square feet, and you come in and go, look, you know, I'm not going to wall off 100 square feet of my existing garage.
Right.
It gives the board the discretion to do something with that.
Okay.
The as-of-right, as it's written, is either 50% of the existing dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is less. But there's also housing standards we have to go with, building codes, things of that nature. Not too many are coming in less than 900 square feet. When Rebecca was planner and we rewrote the accessory bylaw to go from in-law to accessory, part of that, we wanted it to be as-of-right, if you met the standards that we put forward. Because it's kind of silly to have someone come before a board, say, yeah, I, you know, I met all the standards. What's your question?
Yeah.
So we allowed for something outside of that. It got rid of also, and it's something that was in some of the documents that I was concerned about that was going to be moved forward. Some of these as-of rights for either elderly parents, or disabled, or caretaker. And one of the big things I had is, I'm not asking people their age. I'm not asking about their disabilities. You know, I, it, it's not going to happen. It can't happen.
Have some faith.
Yeah. So, you know, really, it, it comes down to, we have to, the law is what it is. It's been signed in. We're going to have to deal with it. But I'd like to be thoughtful in any restrictions we might be able to put on it, so that we're following the law, allowing for this development, that's as-of-right, but also making sure we don't miss something.
So did you say that it was, that you could go up to half of a structure's square footage?
Half or 900 square feet, which is, whichever is less.
Which is less.
So, yeah. So you can't, if you have 3,000 square feet, you can't come in with a 1,500 square foot. It'd be 900.
The 900 seems to be a common number. That seemed to have worked. You would know better as what it is.
The state put that in place as their number.
So I think that's good. Can we still get them? So I think it's prudent to, you know, change our regs around to move into that. I think that it's, that we always get a look at this stuff to benefit the citizens of Groveland. I don't really care what the state throws out there. I want to benefit our citizens. We had an absolute need for these in-law apartments for people, because nobody's getting younger.
I am asked on a weekly basis about accessory units, and how do I get one?
And we need to expedite the permitting process, because, you know, sometimes they come to us a little bit too late. Or they don't know. They just heard, and they, they really want to spend the maximum time with their family, and they need this space. So I don't want to hold anybody up with that. That was a, when we had the hearings on that, that was very clear with it. But I, I think you're right. I think we need to put a couple of, couple of things in there to prevent us looking kind of like the Wild West out there.
Yeah. And I, again, I wanted to bring this up to the board, so that if they had any thoughts, heard anything, had any feedback, or ideas from other cities, towns, anyone that they work with, whatever, they, they might spot a news article, if they start digging into it, any help is, is good help.
One piece of the current bylaws is that it's attached. What are, what are your feelings about attached versus detached? If we're rewriting the bylaws and whatnot, we've talked about that as part of the housing production plan. What are your thoughts, feelings?
I'm a strong proponent of allowing detached. What do we care if it's together? If it's, it makes no difference in the impact on the town. You know, if we want to regulate something along with this that says, you know, it's got to match the, or be consistent with the style of the existing house. So you've got a, you know, a New England-style house. You have a New England-style, so they don't look like it's kind of mismatched. I put this in place for detached in Newbury a number of years ago, and West Newbury recently. We did have one applicant here for a variance over on Union for a detached, which the board approved because of the topography of the land. You'd never know it was there. I got some beautiful pictures. It's a beautiful garage. There's a unit up above. It walks out into the hill. The grandmother comes six months of the year and watches the kids during the summer. It's not a, you know, I don't know why there's this feeling that if you don't attach them, it, somehow it falls apart.
It, it looks like a small shed in the back.
Yeah. I mean, 900 square feet is not big. Most of your garages are, you know, bigger than 900 square feet, if you got a two-pack garage.
Sounds like the tension is, you don't want to invite a whole bunch of Airbnbs, but at the same time, you want to, you want to serve the purpose of, you know, people who want to bring in their families, or generate a little extra revenue, but not transient, like, you know, people are going to be just coming and going.
Right. And there is some limitations on short-term rentals within the Act. So yes. West Newbury, we struck short-term rentals as a use. We just don't allow them. It's, no one's coming to Groveland for, you know, it's not Newbury Port, it's not Newbury, it's, you know, you're not spending the summer in Groveland.
But that's a, that's a question, though, that, that does come up. It came up in our hearings, and I don't know if I ever heard the final answer on that. So, so.
The current bylaw says no lodgers or boarders. The current bylaw says no lodgers or boarders.
Right. So, so that, when it went from an in-law, I mean, that kind of kept the category. But then, the question came up later, what happens if, if it's no longer used as an in-law? Can another family member use it? And that, I'd never heard an answer out of that one. And I'm sure it's happened, and why not?
So past in-law apartments?
Right.
We've accepted as accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
Because to have someone dismantle something they spent tens of thousands of dollars on, I had a great example on Center Street. I had a woman call me crying because her dad died before, they came up, mom died shortly after. She rented it out illegally at the time, because it was an in-law. The guy wasn't an in-law. The neighbor didn't like the guy parking on the street. And she's like, I'm going to lose my house. I, I can't afford. We took an $80,000 mortgage out on this. My parents were paying it. We no longer get their social security. I don't know what to do. Which is one of the main reasons me and Rebecca started pushing hard to get, or at least for me, I don't know if she was aware of it, but changing that, because that's outrageous to say, hey, you just spent $80,000 on an apartment, and you can't use it, or hope you can find someone that's a blood relative? So I said to her, you know, I'll be very honest. I said, he's related to you in some way, isn't he? And she, she goes, yeah. I'm like, good, good. You know, and that, it's a problem, honestly, that, that we run into with enforcement, is I can't, you know.
You're not doing DNA testing.
Yeah. You know, so if you tell me you're related, okay. And then there's, there's also extended family of people that you grew up with, or lived in your house, or you consider family. When I came here, our definition of family in the bylaw was a man, a woman, and their children. Clearly, that doesn't fly today. And the same thing with the in-law apartments. I can't go and try to determine who might be related and to what extent, which is why, again, we just, we, we killed it.
And now, even if you wanted to, you couldn't, because the state says you can anyway.
Can anyway, yeah. So we were just, were, again, trying to be ahead of the curve, doing the right thing. And we're trying to do the same thing now. And that was one of the other questions, is in exploring this, do we want to explore allowing detached? And that is something we could allow with a special permit, because I, well, I should have to take, I do have to take a look, because I don't know if the, the Act specifically calls out attached or detached, or just accessory dwelling units. Again, I haven't read it thoroughly enough yet, but if it didn't, I would want to entertain it anyway.
Sure.
I've had someone come in, actually, today, looking to, they have a garage, they want to put the accessory unit behind it. They wanted to leave their walkway open between the two, the way it is now. And I had to tell her, no. And she goes, well, what do I do? I said, you got to put a roof and some doors on it, because we, you have to have a common wall. And I said to her, I said, our hope is not to have to do that. But how dumb is it to make someone put a roof on something they don't want? Mitch Croner, you know, he's the perfect example. He's been pushing for this since I've been here. He's got a garage that is very well-suited for an apartment above. He has a lot that slopes down on one side to the garage, slopes down on the other away from the house, and the only good access for his lawnmower is between the house and the garage. And for him to convert that, I'd have to block that access, which is, and again, there's no additional.
Well, I mean, I, I think aside from the reason as well, there's just, there's no good reason to require it. There, there really isn't. I think, I think the reasoning for making it attached is, I don't know if it was ever good enough to, to make it the reason, in my eyes, to be honest. I mean, I'm always in favor of, if, if you have the land and it meets the requirements, it's, you can do what you want with your end, as long as it's within the character of the neighborhood and all that thing, right? You know, obviously. So to your point, I think we want to put some, you know, you know, put, put some guidelines around, around it as best we can to make sure that we get it, you know, to the best interest of the town. But at the But at the same, at the same token, letting people do what they want with their land.
Right. And I think some of the fear was, there was this misconception that if you put one house on the lot and then there was another, you'd be able to subdivide that lot into a non, two non-conforming lots.
Right.
That, that's not the case.
Right.
You know, and I think that comes from if you had pre-existing multi-household lot that was dated before zoning, at that time, yeah, you, you couldn't.
Rex, your grandfather didn't.
Exactly. But this isn't the case. But anyway, um, I don't wanna keep this going any longer than.
So how about a motion to bless this operation so that, um, come up with something and then come back to the board with it and then?
Don't even really need a motion. I just, just getting a general feel, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down, if it's thumbs up.
Cool.
As, as a, in terms of logistics, who would, who would draft proposed?
Be me working with Rebecca, with Annie, the way we.
Bylaw change and.
I don't think, I, it's just, it sounds like everyone on the board is, is generally in favor. I would think it would be a good idea to see, to see what some, would draft bylaws would look like. And I think if they're consistent with what we're talking about.
It's an existing bylaw that's just modified.
So, Patrick, that's typically what they do do. They'll, they'll bring in West Newbury, the surrounding towns, they'll look at theirs.
Sure.
And then Sam and Rebecca and Annie will all kinda work together and they, they throw it, they throw it in front of us and then we kinda review it from there.
Yeah, we'll bring it back and forth a few times. Once we get it to a point where we think it's a draft, then we can kinda do a formal proposal.
Sure.
Support it, not support it, whatever, but.
Yeah, no, if it benefits the citizens of Groveland, let's do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't see any detriment in trying to just, you know, keep a hold of how things are developed in town.
Yeah.
As best we can.
Yeah, I like it.
And then Patrick, if you, once we read through, now that we have, you know, the, the filing from the state and some of the stuff, if you read through it and you see anything and you're like, oh, I like this idea, I don't like this, let's try, then that's when we can reach out to Annie, Rebecca, Sam and say, hey, I have an idea and we're talking through and that's, that's, that's why.
Yeah, anytime. Just shoot an email with whatever.
Is the best way to do a collaborative process? It sounds great.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you, Samuel.
Awesome.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Sam.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good. What's up next?
All right. Next up, 929 931 Salem Street project update.
So it's that email?
So you have the email in your packet that was sent from Steve and David?
Yeah.
And it essentially sums up everything that's going on with the project. I know also that the building commissioner has, or at least they have applied for their building permit for the canopy with the building commissioner, which is under review. So it looks like we're still on schedule, moving forward. Once they let us know whether or not the rebar, the rebar, rebar is on schedule, we'll send TEC out to inspect and we'll have an inspection report for you once that's done.
Question. Should I read this email?
You can.
For the public to know?
Yeah, you can.
What the, what the update is?
We've put the packets up on the website, but you can definitely.
With that, with the email?
It's all public information, but you can certainly read it for the record now.
Okay.
Yeah, so what Rebecca was saying is from Steve and David, um, they have an update on the 929 Salem Street. They thought I'd give a preview of the work coming up. Met with Angelo, ComTank, and Wildco, uh, I think it's PES, the canopy provider. We will begin to install the steel beams when all steel has arrived by next week. On Monday, we are starting construction of the footings of the canopy. All material, the completion of the top of the vault should be present at the end of this month. We will begin tying rebar and should be done about by August 9th. We will install and weld plates and should be done by August 16th, for the week and for the week of August 19th. Canopy construction and the drilling and installation of conduits for the pumps and canopy will be on, will be ongoing during August. Keep you posted. So I just wanted to give the residents that update there.
Okay.
So we'll go there.
Do you have any others? Oh, that was it. The canopy going up? Yeah, on the gas station. Oh, yeah.
Rebecca, did you have anything else other than?
Uh, just to inform the board that 181 Rear School Street has filed for their definitive subdivision application. We will be sending out the application to various departments for comments, and this will most likely happen on Friday. And we have asked TEC for a proposal for the engineering review for this particular project. So we are looking to see if the board can set their fall schedule for September, October, so that we may communicate such with the applicant so we can advertise the meeting accordingly.
So when's, when's Labor Day?
Labor Day's the 2nd.
All right.
September 2nd, and then the 3rd is actually primaries, so we can't do that either.
So how about kicking 2 and 4? The 2nd, 2nd September and?
So the 2nd Tuesday is the 10th?
10th. Now, well, it's the 4th, 11th, but okay. Yeah. And then?
And the 24th?
Okay.
Doing that, we do wanna do the 2nd and the 3rd, or do we wanna do Wednesday, the 4th of September and keep it on that?
I would keep it out of, completely out of Labor Day because it's gonna be a zoo too for those that have kids going back to school and.
It, it, it.
School starts the week before.
And the Wednesday has, that Wednesday has zoning board conflict as well.
Yeah, so.
The 10th and the 24th gives us good space.
10 and 24.
10th and 24th gives us good space so that if there's, if there are updates and whatnot, there's a little bit of a gap so that things can happen.
Yeah. And then put them on for the 24th.
Can do that.
Ends that. Um, when, when the plans go out to the, to all the different boards, are, have they